Okay, Chair Stewart.
Yes.
I have the devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. It is Tuesday, July 6, 2021, and we have a full complement of commissioners here. So we are called to order. We will start with a moment of silence. And next, we have planning commissioner announcements. Anybody raising their hand? All right, I have an announcement. I have bought a house in La Sosa. After 33 years in Morro Bay, I think I'll be having a major identity crisis, but it's kind of an exciting opportunity. I will still have my business here in town, but it does mean I will be needing to step off of the planning commission by the end of the month. I do want to encourage the community to apply to be on this commission. It is a stellar group of people. It's exciting and interesting to be part of the planning process in Morro Bay. It's an opportunity to really understand and be a part of your community. And now that the general plan is over, it's not quite so scary. You know, I think people think about, oh, my gosh, you know, hundreds of pages of reading, it's not that overwhelming. So I hope that a lot of you out there consider applying. We have a lot of new commissioners who have been doing a great job. And I think it's a great opportunity to understand more about your community. So hopefully, we get some applicants. All right, public comment period. Is there any general public comment for items not on the agenda or items on the agenda for which you cannot stay to speak when they come up? Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue?
Oh, thank you, Chair Stewart. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay. Thank you. And have you been able to get Joe via telephone?
Well, he's called, I think this is his number.
The 818?
Yeah. Oh, we can hear you.
Can anybody hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, no, I had the image a moment ago, but let's see if we can get it back.
We've still got your image on one screen and your phone number on the other, so it's working.
Okay. I can't see you, but that's okay.
Okay. All right. Well, you look great, so there you go.
Hold on, I'm back. Okay.
All right. So no other public comments? So let's move on to the consent calendar. We only have one item, the current and advanced planning processing list. Do we have any questions or discussion on that? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Jen? I move that we... Oh, my gosh, I'm going blank right now. Are we okay with the consent calendar?
There you go. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Bill, it looks like, or maybe it was Mike.
Yeah, second from Mike.
Okay, thanks, Mike. All in favor? I guess we do a roll call.
Yeah, I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oshin?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
Jefferson Stewart?
Yes.
Mission passes five zero, thank you.
All right, moving on to public hearings, we have item B1, and I believe Nancy Hubbard is going to be up on this one. Hi, Nancy.
Hi. All right, let's share the screen. Okay, so the public hearing for conditional use permit, coastal development permit, and parking exception for in addition to an existing single-family home at 490 Piney Way. Existing site information, it's a 6,000-square-foot site. It's zoned R2. It's an existing 1952 home with a single-car garage. It has had historic resource study evaluation in it. The buildings do not meet the criteria as historic resource. The existing garage will be converted into JADU. And again, as you're probably getting used to, that will be an administrative approval and not part of tonight's subject. It's an R2 zoning, which allows duplex residential with a land area requirement of 2,900 square feet per dwelling. It's in Land Use Plan Area 7, which is central Morro Bay, which allows a mix of commercial and residential. The review and approval process, and this image is showing you a site plan, and the blue square areas are the areas that are either new or converted. And the area in the center is the existing home that's original and not being changed other than the interior. So the approval process is that the existing home is nonconforming as to the parking because it has a single-car garage and the side yard setbacks, and that's the north and the south or the top and the bottom on this image. Because of the small garage that's being converted into a JADU, a parking exception is required. And the proposed replacement parking is two tandem spaces in the driveway in front of the single-car garage. The proposed addition, which is 1,124 square feet, is significantly more than 25% of the existing home, which is 736 square feet. And since the home is nonconforming, the project required a discretionary review. So that's why we're here. The proposed project, here's the ground floor level, and I've shaded in yellow the new areas. It's 970 square feet, addition to the lower level or the existing single-story home, and it includes a connection to the bathroom in the garage. And the connection to the bathroom in the garage is essential in order to allow the garage conversion to become a JADU, which we're not talking about. Second floor, they're adding a second floor. The existing home is a single story. They're adding a small second floor, 154 square feet, with a 71-square-foot deck. Here's the street view. In the top right, there's a recent view from Piney Way with the yellow arrow pointing at the small house. There's a vehicle in front of the small garage, so you can't see it. The bottom left is a photo simulation of the proposed view of the finished product from Piney Way. And you can see on the south side, there is a new home there, and that was completed in December 2020. City development standards. In the R2 standards column is the thresholds, and the column to the right is the proposed thresholds met by the single-family home with the addition. And as you can see, the text in red is where it is not conforming. And so there is an existing nonconforming setback on the north and the south side, but all of the other standards, other than parking, they're meeting the development standards. And parking is being met through the parking exception request for two tandem parking spaces versus one covered and enclosed. This is the south and north elevations. The south is on the top, and I've got red boxes that kind of indicate general areas that are new. West and east elevation, same thing. The front is on the west elevation. You can see the two-story component that has stepped back from the front of the house, which is also new. And the east elevation, which shows on the left, the two-story component from this direction and the addition that was in the back of the home. Neighborhood compatibility. The existing neighborhood is primarily older, original homes. There's a church across the street and a new home, as I mentioned before, on the south side of the subject property. To the south of the property, there are more two-story homes, and to the north, the homes appear to be more original, single-story homes. The proposed project meets the design standards. It's an efficient use of the site with a visible front entry and designed the second story to be stepped back from the front of the home. Public comment. We received a few comments, all had to do with the parking. And one of them was kind enough to point out an error in the postcard that was sent out, and I highlighted the error, which is a carryover from another project that says an addition of a new two-car garage. There is no addition of a two-car garage. They're solving the parking issue, which is actually an existing condition with the parking exception and the proposed tandem spaces in the garage or in the parking lot, parking lot, in the driveway, how about that? And with that, we'll conclude, and staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit, the coastal development permit, and the parking exception pursuant to the findings and conditions of approval included in Planning Commission Resolution 13-21.
Thanks, Nancy. All right, bringing it back to the commission, are there any questions, comments of staff on this? Not seeing anybody. Jen?
I have a question about the parking exemption, that part of what we're discussing here. As far as that goes, I know we aren't allowed to talk about the two structures, ADU and the JADU, but in consideration that there could be an addition to the back area and people would be staying there, is the two tandem spaces enough? Since Piney is such a busy street, I don't know if there was plans. In the plans, it looks like there's plans and not that they're going to put an extra parking space in the front there of the lot. And I'm just curious about that situation, if there is going to be enough parking for that or if we're not even allowed to talk about it because of it being an ADU.
Well, so the ADU in the back, which we didn't talk about, you can't require parking for the ADU. So what you can do, and the JADU is taking the single-car garage, but again, a JADU does not protect the parking rights. So for the JADU, because it's taking the single-car garage and because a single-car garage is not adequate for the size of the house, they're required for the parking exception. So the most we can require is two spaces. So it actually is an existing condition because I believe that the single-car garage is not currently used as a garage. And so they currently are parking whatever the parking need, it's occurring in their driveway. So what we're really doing is we're authorizing an existing condition and meeting the requirement of the two spaces required for the single-family home.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Joe has something there?
Yeah.
Are the applicants the one who originally converted the garage into a living area with the bathroom?
I'm not sure who did that. The applicants will be on the Zoom meeting, so they could be asked, but it's, you know, it's an existing condition, and with this application, they're turning it into an approved dwelling unit.
Nancy, wasn't the historic analysis, was that for this one?
Yes.
And didn't it say that that was the, the garage was actually the home they originally lived in while they were constructing the house? Then they converted it to a garage? I think that's what that study says.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So it likely had a bathroom.
Wow.
Anyway, I'm sure the applicant's going to answer the question. I just, I was reading that before the meeting today and found it sort of fascinating, so.
And are we continuing to inform people who are applying for the ADUs and JADUs that they cannot be used as vacation rentals?
Yes, I've added, I've started adding that as a condition of approval in the resolution.
Good. Because it seems to me, so one question is, if this is mixed commercial residential that doesn't fall under our allowing in commercial areas, sort of an unlimited number of vacation rentals, this is still partly residential, so it wouldn't be...
It would need a residential vacation license.
And we have different parking requirements if there's a vacation rental, so, okay, just wanted to make sure that gets clarified. I'm hearing from Realtors that they're not always seeing that actually follow through that way, so.
Well, the ordinance isn't in place yet, Susan, so.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, maybe that's what they're talking about, I'm not sure. But we have issued a vacation rental license since we started that draft ordinance process. There's still a moratorium in place.
Excellent. Okay. Anybody else have any questions of staff? Bill, you're good. Mike, you're okay? All right, let's open up for public comment then. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Wouldn't we typically start with the project representatives?
Yes, if they're on board here. So that would be Phelps or Houston?
Okay. Let's see. I am unmuting Denise Phelps. Okay, Denise, you are live.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I am here. I think Nick, the designer, and also Paula are online too, but I'm going to try to answer your questions unless I need help. I'm the homeowner. So I've been coming here since I was a little girl in 1952 when I was born, so I have, I know a lot of answers about what's happened. We are, we have always currently used the little garage as an extra place to sleep when we had family and, you know, family get-togethers.
Well, welcome. Denise, do you have anything else you'd like to say about the project, or shall we see if any of the commissioners have questions?
I think, I don't think I need to comment. I think you've done a wonderful job, Nancy, but if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Okay. Anybody have questions for Ms. Phelps? No? Looks like a pretty easy one. Joe, you got anything? You're okay?
Well, I'm listening. I think my question was answered that sometime in the distant past, the garage had a bathroom added to, you know, they do for whatever reason.
And it was restored with the permit in 2018, believe from Foundation Up. You've got, yeah.
It's pretty cute. I've walked by it a number of times and...
Thank you. Well, my mom had a great idea to make it pretty, you know, to restore it, make everybody, my brothers wanted to tear it down, but it's my great-grandfather built it, and so we could, you know, make it sick, make it look good.
So it stays a family home, and it sounds like you've got some extended family too, so.
That's what we want to use it for, not rent anything.
That's great. Terrific. I like the design. I think it's appropriate. And once again, we're having some architects who are sort of adding on to the themes of the existing homes in a way that makes them look like they fit. Mike, I see your hand up. Would you like to add something?
Sure. I just want to ask Denise a question since she has been a long-term resident, being there for a long time, but, and we have gotten comments regarding parking, the parking situation and the number of parking spaces. So can you just comment on that, Denise? What will change or what won't change and how you've been dealing with that in the past? Since it is such a, you know, that's where we got most of our comments from.
Yeah, and I know it is a concern. We have never ever used the garage as a parking space. At one point, my grandfather put a garage door on it because he was worried he was going to have to pay property tax on the space, and at that time, it was only being used for storage. Right now, currently, my husband and I use it as our master bedroom, and my husband built the new carriage doors on the front. But it's really not going to change at all. All we really want to do is make our home a little larger so that we can have family and holidays, have, invite our kids to come and continue to enjoy it. When we were young, we always slept in this 736-square-foot house and people in the garage, and it was okay. But now, it seems like people need a little more space, so we want to make it bigger so all our grandkids and kids can come at once and have our holidays and vacations together again. The parking dimension, too, is that we've always parked in the driveway, but if you look at it from an aerial view, you can see that there's a lot of strip parking, and no one in this area uses it. On occasion, they will use it like we do, like if they're doing something, we'll pull a car out and park it on the street if we're doing work or something. We also have a public transportation just across the street from our house where the trolley picks people up. But it's never been a problem, and it's really not going to change. There's not going to be any more tenants. I can't talk about 10 years from now, but right now, nothing's planned. No changes, just my husband and I living here.
Right?
And visiting the family.
I just want to thank Denise for her comments. I think that clarifies a lot of issues for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, Anthony, any other public comment in the queue?
Let's see. Thank you, Chair Stewart. I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion on this project among the commissioners?
Ready to make a motion, Susan.
All right, Bill, go for it.
I make the motion that we agree with the staff report and the staff recommendation.
Do I have a second? Mike, you got your hand up? Mike, are you standing?
Yeah, I had to unmute myself again. Yeah, that is a second. That's why I had my hand up. I'm trying to push all these buttons. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion from Bill and a second from Mike. Let's do a roll call vote. Scott, or no, Nancy, you get to do it.
Commissioner Ford? Commissioner Graffia?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oshin?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. And you're still up, Nancy. We're moving on to B2. This is the 3200 Beachcomber Drive, another parking exception. So let's see our report on this one.
All right, can you see your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, this is an application for a major modification to an existing coastal development permit, and it also includes a parking exception for the property located at 3200 Beachcomber. It's an 8,500-square-foot site. You can see on the map, it's zoned R1 S2A. The home is, was built in 1972. Site development constraints, it has a drainage ditch on one or almost two sides of it, and on three sides, it has streets. Mendora Way on the south, Orkut Street on the north, and Beachcomber Drive on the west. Development standards, same as the other table, this has the standards for the zone and the overlay district in the center, and to the right is the standards met for the addition to the project. Again, this home is nonconforming with the northwest corner. That's slightly less than the 15 feet required for the exterior side yard. And the home on Mendora is seven feet back, and the garage is four and a half feet back from Mendora instead of 15. The last exception is that it has a two-car garage, but it's nonconforming because there's equipment in it, and they have one covered and closed space technically and are asking for a second space outside. Project overview. This is the site, and in blue is the 700-square-foot residential addition. And the red or maroon to the bottom left is the exterior addition. It's 500 square feet of pavers for patio addition. And the brown area is 200 square feet of deck and stairs in the back. Along Mendora Way, item number five, is walkways and parking improvements. So review process requirements. Discretionary review is required because the proposed addition is more than 25% of the original size of the home, and the home is nonconforming as to the interior space in the garage and the setbacks on Orkut and Mendora. The image on the left shows you the little corner that's nonconforming on the top of the image, and then a large area on the bottom that is nonconforming along Mendora. And then the image on the right is the interior of the garage, as well as the front entryway, and this shows you the original water heater was installed. There's a sink in the garage, washer dryer, so it does not meet the requirements for two cars to park in there. So the approval of addition greater than 25% of the existing home requires that it be in conformance with the development standards, and the proposed project is not worsening the nonconforming aspects. So everything new is in conformance with the development standards. And that the proposed project must satisfy all requirements for and is suitable as a conforming use, and it's been a conforming use since 1972 when it was built. And then, thirdly, the determination that it's not feasible to fix the nonconforming structure without major construction, and you could see from that previous image that the portion along Mendora Way is quite significant, and that would be very cost prohibitive. Parking exception. This again is because the existing garage is too narrow because of all the equipment that was installed in there, and the parking exception is requesting one open and uncovered parking space next to the reconstructed driveway. So this is not really tandem in the driveway, this is a dedicated space next to the driveway. So the review process requirements for a parking exception are that we find that it's not a grant of special privilege inconsistent with parking limitations in the area, and this is true, especially with development constraints of this specific property. That it will not have an adverse effect on the people in the area or create traffic safety problems. And again, the proposed outdoor parking space is outside of the improved street. Most residents use their driveway for parking, and with the reduced setbacks in this overlay zone, it's common for cars to be parked partially in the right-of-way. The exception is required for the applicant's full use and enjoyment, and this condition is common in this area, and this parking situation has been an existing condition for this property. Project addition. This shows on the bottom left, the existing floor plan, and on the larger image on the right, this shows the new area. The hardscape improvements are primarily along Mendora Way. The bottom left shows you the interior improvements, which you saw in the previous image in brown, and then Mendora Way shows you the barbecue, the gas fireplace, the patio, and then the parking and driveway improvements. Recent images along the top of the home, one is looking south from Beachcomber, and the other is looking west from Mendora. And then the bottom is the photo simulation of the completed project with the exterior And that concludes the presentation, and staff recommends the planning commission approve the major modification by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 14-21, which includes the findings and the conditions of approval for the project. Thanks, Nancy. You're welcome. I really like the way you're doing the pictures now with that shaded area that really shows these additions. It's really... Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions for staff?
Can you face turn me now?
Yes, Joe, we can hear you.
Yeah, I can't take credit for fixing it, but I'm just glad it's fixed. Yeah, I do have a question. I'm hearing your necklace, so I don't know if that's...
You might turn off your phone.
Yeah.
Maybe your phone's still on.
Phone or...
Okay, good. How's that?
Little better.
Sounds good.
There it goes.
I'll put it far away. Put simply, the reason we need the parking exception is because there's a washer dryer in the garage and a hot water tank. Is that about accurate?
Yes, that's correct. And that's really not part of the project, so I mean, it would be awesome to ignore it, but there is a solution, and the solution was in the hardscape improvements. So I think it's better to acknowledge, since there are so many major improvements going on, interior and exterior, to acknowledge it and have it in the record.
Right. And as typical, is the applicant the one who originally put the hot water tank and the appliances in the garage? And was it permitted or not?
I think the original, well, the original home was 1972, and that was permitted. And I believe that the water heater or something was installed originally, and then some other equipment, as long as that space couldn't be used for a car, got installed. But the applicant is going to participate in the call, so he could answer that directly.
Okay. That's it.
Any other questions? So I have a question. This house, in my records, is listed as a vacation rental. At least two years ago, it was an active vacation rental. Have they given up their permit for that? Again, you can ask him. I mean, that's not really part of making a decision. If he has a valid vacation rental, then that's... I think it is for the parking exception, though, because that would allow them to have as many as eight occupants. If they have three bedrooms, it's two people per bedroom plus two. So that would, you know, make a bigger impact, I think, in the parking potentially. I think from a practical standpoint, but I mean, Scott could chime in if there... I don't know that from a planning standpoint, if we are looking at a home that's currently a vacation rental, that we're not going to require eight parking spaces.
I believe he does maintain a current vacation rental license for the site.
Okay.
Looking it up right now, though.
Okay. All right, any other questions for staff? And I think we'll open it up to the applicant if they are with us to give any sort of presentation. Walter Auerbach? Sure.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and unmute. Okay, Mr. Auerbach, you are unmuted.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks for having me. Yeah, very appreciative that you're hearing this today. We've owned this home since 2010 and enjoy it very much, more and more every year. We have lived with it for 11 years or so, thinking about what we could do to improve it. To answer one question, we did not install the washer dryer and water heater in the garage that was there when we purchased the home. And there's also a garage sink. I'm not sure where it could have possibly been located in the home previously. There certainly isn't any indication that it was elsewhere in the home, so I'm not really sure what was done previously, but that's the way it existed when we bought it. And to respond to Chairperson Stewart's question, yes, we do still hold a vacation rental permit. It is an extremely popular vacation rental. It's really the only way we've been able to afford and even consider these improvements. But it's still small. We currently only allow six heartbeats, and that includes four people and two dogs, or six people to stay in our home, and we're very serious about that. We don't allow any street parking, we're very serious about that. As a matter of fact, I was very vocal during discussions about the vacation rental process because I felt that there were some bad actors out there that were giving some of us good actors a bad name. But regardless, and we're not here to talk about vacation rentals, we don't think we're going to continue vacation renting it once we finish with the improvements, but we really haven't made that decision yet. But beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions. We are in agreement with the conditions of approval and happy to move forward on that basis.
All right, thanks so much. I do remember having lots of communication with you, and it was very helpful during that whole process, so... Anybody have any questions for the applicant, as long as he's on the line?
Hi, Susan, this is Mike.
Hey, Mike.
Yes, Walter, I just thought I'd ask you the same question I asked the prior applicant, which is, how do you see parking changing there when we do do this? I mean, you know, I always like to chime in on that one just because it gives me a level of, you know, of understanding as well as the community what's going to be happening if this changes me. Thank you.
Am I still unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. How is parking going to change? Well, I can tell you, when we come down to visit the house with our two dogs and all our gear, our Suburban doesn't fit in the driveway because it's only about 17 feet, I think, from the face of the garage to the curb line. And so we would, the reason we have that extra space is really not anything to do with the parking exception, and so we can park our car out of the road completely. You know, beyond that, I don't see any change in parking. I certainly, you know, when we have people down, we currently put three vehicles or four vehicles on the property now, if I'm coming down with family and kids and so forth. But yeah, I'm not sure if I answered your question. I don't think things will really change much. Certainly, we're not going to be inviting more people to park. If we operate it as a vacation rental, we'll still have the same restrictions on it. Everybody parks off the street or in the garage.
Yeah, Walter, thank you for answering that because, again, you know, we often get, you know, concerns about that, but it gives me, again, a level of understanding as to how things would change or not change. But then again, during your presentation, you did talk about how you currently park and how you're very serious about that, so I appreciate that. So thank you very much.
You bet.
All right, Joe.
Yeah, I might be sensitive to the really difficult parking situation in the area. When I was looking at it, it confirmed with me what I had forgotten, which was, if you have somebody parked on the curb on one of those side streets that are next to the Beachcomber, it's not possible for cars traveling in the opposite direction on the side street to pass each other at the same time. So it really requires closely a very decisional due with respect to congestion there. So, you know, I'm going to ask what must be a fairly tactless question, but I'll ask it anyway. In view of the really extensive... Excuse me, one second, we'll be back in three, five seconds. Sorry about that. In view of the significant amount of square footage being added and the extensive remodeling of the existing house, and then the extensive remodeling of the exterior, you know, an alternative solution would be simply to fix the garage situation through the hot water tank and appliances out there, create another parking space, and not really need an exception. So I'm looking at it as an explanation as to why the applicant decided not to do that. Yeah, that's...
If I could, can I interject for a second, Joe? Because it's not an extensive remodel of the exterior. There's nothing on the exterior other than on the inside portion of the house away from the streets. So they're not, the proposal is not touching the garage. It's not moving any walls, it's adding two doors. But to fix the garage situation, I mean, we did talk about that in comment letters back and forth, but it's just not practical. And since it's not really part of the project, it doesn't seem reasonable to require it to be fixed.
You know, okay, I want to argue the point. Am I wrong? I was thinking that in the simplest fashion, a hot water tank in the closet outside the house and putting the washer dryer somewhere else in the house is an alternative solution. Am I wrong in that?
It's, well, it's an existing condition, and they're not changing that part of the house.
So I guess they aren't asking for an exception to the parking.
So I guess, Commissioner Graffia, yes, of course, they could remove those improvements out of the garage. That could happen. And they could relocate it and maybe incorporate it in some fashion into the addition. But, you know, I mean, as you're likely aware, you know, having said on the General Plan Advisory Committee and Planning Commission, you know, our draft zoning code does away with the garage requirement. It is draft, hasn't been adopted yet, but it does get rid of the garage requirement. It simply requires the parking be provided on site. In this instance, you know, they're able to park two vehicles, one vehicle in the garage, two vehicles in the driveway adjacent to the garage, and then they've created another parking space, which puts back the space that's unavailable because of the washer and dryer and sink and hot water heater. So they're whole in a manner that's consistent with directions been given by the Planning Commission in the past for our draft zoning code. So I don't know, it seems like kind of a zero-sum game. I mean, I think we're where we need to be and where we would be otherwise, you know, where we, you know, to have the draft zoning code in place. So I don't know, my thoughts anyway.
And the existing garage is a foot short in width without that equipment in there. So wall-to-wall interior space, it doesn't meet the requirement. So from technically, even if the equipment was not in there, we would still require a parking exception.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Oh, that's, I'm sorry, I did not understand that. I thought the existing footprint of the garage was sufficient for two cars if the equipment simply moved out. This is interesting for me, though.
Not technically. I mean, too many Coopers could still get in there.
You know, Nancy, thanks for bringing that up. I actually wanted to address that because we did think about that possibility of moving the washer dryer elsewhere. That's why I know I can't figure out where it would have been previously because there isn't any plumbing for it. But the reality is, 20 by 20 garage, or even the 19 by 20 garage that we have, is still too small for two vehicles. I have a 22 by 24 garage at home, and all you end up doing is banging doors, and vehicles are bigger these days. And so the fact that we have an existing nonconforming garage in terms of size, you know, even if that equipment wasn't in there, we would meet the, we'd be close to meeting the letter of the requirement, but I'd still want to put another parking space outside because you just can't get two vehicles in there.
Yeah, you have my sympathy. My garage is 20 feet wide, and I put two cars in it. I would not want to contemplate trying to do that in a garage that was only 19 feet because it's very tight, even the 20.
Yep.
Mike, did you have your hand up there? No, okay. We should open for general public comment, if there's anybody in the queue for that. Anthony, do we have anybody else wanting to speak to this issue?
I currently do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, back to the commission for discussion on this project. And thank you so much, Mr. Auerbach.
Thank you.
Anybody want to open this up for any more comments, discussion?
Yeah, now I do have my hand up.
Okay, Mike.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to approve based on staff recommendation.
All right, any discussion on this motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Joe. All right, Ms. Hubbard, you may call the roll. Okay, Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Graffia?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Roshan?
Yes.
Chair Stewart?
Yes, and I would also like to thank Mr. Auerbach for being very clear with his vacation renters about keeping the cars off the street. Really appreciate that.
Thank you. We love the community and wouldn't do it any other way.
All right, thanks so much. All right, new business. Got any new business? Nothing written there. Unfinished business. There's nothing on the agenda for that. Scott, have you got anything unfinished?
No, I'll give my update report on process underneath the director's report.
Okay. And Planning Commissioner comments and proposed future agenda items. Mike, your hand is still up, or is that leftover?
Yeah, well, it's leftover, but it's up, so what the heck. I wanted to just ask Scott a question. We've been in communication, you know, we have this subcommittee dealing with public benefits, and we've been in communication with Sean. Joe's been part of that loop, so we're trying to set up a meeting. And I was hoping that Scott could be part of at least the first meeting to, you know, let us understand, you know, some of the, you know, the things that the city may be wanting to see out of this. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I know Joe's been part of the email, so I don't know if Joe has any comments about that, but I'd like to set up a meeting as soon as we can. And I did meet, by the way, with one of our council members who thought it was a good idea to do this, so that's been put in the ear of at least one council member who thought it was a good idea to do this. And I did make them aware that we did establish a subcommittee to do this work. And again, it was all thumbs up, so I'd like to move forward as soon as we can with this. I'll just let Joe chime in if he has any questions.
I'm happy to send out a meeting invite. I'll do it either tomorrow or the next day. I'll send out a meeting invite, or at least some available times where I could have us meet, meet in person in the conference room here if you guys want, or we can do Zoom, it's up to you. But I'll send out an email tomorrow or the next day on that.
Sounds good.
That's great, great. I would agree, it'd be nice to get together. I've looked at, Sean has put together a very extensive list of both specific and general benefits. I doubt if I could add very much to it, but it certainly, you know, requires that we all go over it slowly and carefully, yeah.
Yeah, and just the reason, I remember when I first started, Scott, you did say that, you know, obviously, staff would want to be part of that process to make sure we're headed in the right direction, and it sounds like council likes this, so, you know, at least one of our council members. But I did get the input that our council would like to see that, so I think it would work if we get together and start this process. Thank you.
Sounds good.
All right. Glad to hear that's in motion, and that Sean Green is on board too, since he is full of great ideas. All right, let's move on to Community Development Director comments. Mr. Graham?
Probably going to be bringing you back for your next meeting. It'll either be the next meeting or the first one in August. Some items for discussion for the goal-setting process that we're going to be starting with council coming up here. So I'll probably come forward with about 10 or so items for the Planning Commission to consider, like that we get down to about five, so we can give a manageable list of things that, you know, could be in our work program for the next two years. So I'm kind of, I say this meeting or the next because I'm working with the city manager on a portion of it. He has kind of an intro to the whole subject that he wants to give, I think. And so it's kind of dependent on his availability, otherwise I'd just say it's next meeting. But it is, again, depend on him giving me the thumbs up that he's ready to go. Other than that, and I apologize for not including it in here, I said I would keep this on the agenda under unfinished business, is the, you know, ongoing, you know, work that we're doing on process improvements for the planning department. We, as the subcommittee, we haven't met again, only because I just don't have the capacity to do the next... to do the next step, which is gonna be to form a larger stakeholder group and have like four, maybe four or five meetings with them to look at specific process at the front counter and those types of things. But on the other side of things, we have entered into contracts with Citywork, which is our permitting system, to take it off city servers and to move it on to Cityworks Online, which is a hosted service. It's a lot more reliable, a lot more, a lot better backup there, and we get all the latest updates, the Cityworks get rolled out pretty quickly that way as opposed to us having to do it internally, and it usually creates a waiting period for that. We've also inked contracts with Centricity, who's helping us speed the migration, over to the Cityworks Online platform, and that work has started this week. And we've also entered into a tender agreement on a contract for digi-plan, which is how we're gonna do online plan checking. So when you're, you'll be able to submit your applications online, we'll be able to review them and give you comments back on those plans digitally, electronically, and we'll sort of be moving towards a more paperless sort of process. And it'll increase turnaround times because we won't be putting application packages together to route out to different departments, it'll be done electronically. So it'll dramatically, I think, increase turnaround times for folks and applicants and city staff as well. So we're looking forward to that. And we're also talking about improving process. We've gone through the recruitment process for an intern, and we found one. She looks pretty fantastic, and we're hoping to bring her onboard in the next two weeks. We have recruitment ongoing right now, I think through almost the end of the month for to replace our assistant planner position. You'll recall that Willow Urquidi was our assistant planner, and when she left, we did not replace that position, it was frozen because of economic impact due to COVID. The city council, recent council meeting adopted the upcoming fiscal year budget for 2021, '22, and it includes the, putting that position back. And we're also recruiting for an admin assistant that will be shared between the community development department and the public works department. That'll help with processing applications on our building from inside of things, where we're getting pretty backed up because we're pretty busy. So all in all, you know, while we're not doing the meeting thing yet with the subcommittee, once I get some of the staff back in house, I'll be able to, you know, free up some time to do those things, and we'll move forward with that. But in the meantime, we are working on a number of process improvements, including staffing up, which should help things quite a bit, so. That is, that's the end of what I had to share. Oh, and, you know, picking up where Chairperson Stewart indicated that she'll be, because she's moving out at the end of the, end of the month, we have posted the recruitment for a planning commissioner. That went up this afternoon, and it'll run through the end of the month. So if any of you are aware of anybody that might be interested in being a planning commissioner, you can share that name with me, or you could reach out to them, you know, on your own, and direct them my way, I'd be happy to talk to anybody that's interested in becoming a planning commissioner and working with the team, so. I think, but that, that's about all I got for today.
Great, sounds like you've been pretty busy.
I have a question. Yeah, so is today Susan's last day, or does she get to finish through July? Or when, when does this transition happen?
Her last meeting will be your next meeting, which is the last one that we have in July.
Okay, thank you. And I'm really sad, Susan, I know I've.
I know, I'm kind of bummed, too. Like, do I buy this house, or do I stay on planning commission? I don't know. Yeah.
I understand, I understand, but I just want you to know that you'll be missed.
Thank you, Jen. Mike, do you, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I was gonna also ask that question, but now that Susan will be at another meeting, I can thank her for all those, at least the great meetings we've had, so. But I did have a question for Scott. I'm trying to remember our council liaison, and you did say that you were gonna be bringing things to the commission to consider, like our top 10 priorities, I just can't remember what, what the substance of that was.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, yes. So at the next meeting or the following one, I need to confirm with the city manager. I'll be bringing forward probably 10 items for your consideration in the goal-setting process that we're entering right now. I know the city manager's met with a couple of the other city boards, commissions, committees, and we're up next, I guess, and so we'll be doing that, and I'm gonna bring forward about 10 items for you to consider. It's not that those are the only things that you can consider, I'm just trying to give you a manageable list of things, you know, looking over the next two years of things that we could accomplish. Certainly, the commission's free to have, you know, a conversation about if they're gonna want to add something to the list that's not on it, or what have you. It's just to kind of start the conversation with you. And, you know, I do pay attention to things you find of interest, you know, like one of the things Chair Stewart will appreciate that will come forward is one of the items on that list would be the historical preservation ordinance that was written by, you know, a community group for that, so that'd be one of the items that's on there, among several others, but that was just an example.
Yeah, and the reason I ask you that, Scott, is because will that person with a council liaison for the planning commission be attending that meeting or be part of that meeting? I just think it would be a benefit, you know, to work with a council member, that way they can relay what we're trying to do, or what we're, what are, maybe how we got to those top 10, you know, priorities, I don't know, I just think it's a productive way to do things. And the reason I'm saying that now is because I also think that when I did meet with the council member for the, you know, that's liaison with the planning commission, they also expressed a desire to work with the planning commission on the public benefits portion. I just think that the more we get our council involved, at least our liaison involved with what we're doing, then the better we can work together. It's just about efficiency, about working close with somebody from the council that understands what we're trying to do as well, so that was just my input.
Okay, all right. Certainly, you know, I mean, I'll make sure that he's, you know, aware when we bring it forward, so he can attend a meeting, and if he wants to, you know, participate and talk with the planning commission about that, that's certainly his prerogative, and we can, we can bring him onboard, that's not an issue.
Great.
Good, I think he has attended some of our meetings via Zoom, I've seen his name in there.
Yeah, it's Councilmember Heller for everybody that's out there.
Right, and I think it's easier with in-person meetings, you know, you'd see him there, and we could say, you know, hey Jeff, have you got any input on this? The Zoom thing makes it a little more challenging, but I think you're right, Mike, it's really helpful to have that connection.
Yeah, and, you know, and I'll just share this with everybody, we were gonna meet for a half an hour, and we ended up meeting for two hours. That's what I meant about our desire, we have common goals, common desires for the city, so I think it's there. We've got the right person. He should be a planning commissioner, Councilmember Heller, so, because he thinks like a planning commissioner, so that, that's why, I've already shared that with Bill, so, you know, we both agree that we need that kind of support when it comes to what we're trying to do, okay? Thank you.
Excellent. All right, any other final comments from anybody? If not, I guess.
I just have a question really quick, sorry, Susan. So Scott, did we, we may have already discussed this, and I just don't have it in my notes, did we, did we find out a tentative date to return to in-person, or is that still up in the air?
So, so the, the sort of thing that needs to get resolved before we go back is, the council's, you know, in working with AGP, wants to be able to do in-person meetings, but have the ability for folks to, you know, dial into the meeting via Zoom as well.
I would love that.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, I mean, we're trying to be more inclusive, right? We have this opportunity, and we want to take advantage of it, and so it'll be, you know, once that's, that's all ironed out, that's when we'll go back, council will go back first, followed by the advisory bodies, advisory boards. So we're hoping in September that that'll be the council meeting, one of them will be the council meeting that we go back in, and then the advisory bodies will follow. So it might be October, might be the first one, I don't know. If we go the first meeting in September, then depending on when our meeting falls related to that, we might do our next one, you know, in person. But that's what we're shooting for, anyway, try to get back in, in person, and have folks come to the meetings. We certainly, even on the council side of things, unless it's a really controversial or, you know, meeting or what have you, we do notice that just doing it via Zoom, we don't get as many folks, you know, involved, and that's a desire of the council to get it back in person, so we, so we do have more folks coming. And then to have the other, the option of Zoom, just so we can have, you know, different ways for people to have access is really what we're looking for.
So Scott, just a first clarification, are you guys working on the ability for the panelists to be zoomed in, or is it only those participating from the community that are calling in for public comment?
It'll just be those that are, that are calling in for public comment. Certainly, you know, if, if folks, somebody was out, you know, and wanted to participate via Zoom for the meeting, and we had that available, then a commissioner could do that. We've even had it where a commissioner was able to call in, and we've done that, it's not always easy, but we have done that in the past when there was, you know, big items on the agenda, and somebody was gonna be absent, but they said, oh, willing to do it, I just, I'm gonna be wherever, so. So, yeah, I think it would work for that, but the idea would be, normally you would be there unless you were gonna be out for whatever, for whatever reason, so.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, it's great.
Sure.
Great, all right. I think we are ready to adjourn. Our next meeting will be July 20th at 6:00 PM, and as you heard, it's still gonna be via teleconference. Hope everybody has a great couple of weeks, and thank you.
Good, everybody, thank you.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody. Bye.